This is the first Tuesday in the month of Wopaka City Council Meeting.
Regular scheduled City Council Meeting, today is Tuesday, July 5th, 2016, and I do call this meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll ask Sandy to read the open meeting statement for us, the clerk's open meeting statement.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you take role, Sandy?
Brian Smith?
Here.
Steve Hackett?
Here.
Lori Chestnut?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Alan Keeland?
Here.
Scott Porczaskey?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Chuck Whitman?
Here.
Jillian Peterson?
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Next up is the consent agenda, there are no new additions to that consent agenda. There are a few items on the consent agenda that we will vote on with one motion. Are there any items there that council would like to see moved to the regular agenda where we vote on those separately? Hearing done, we would need a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Motion by Keeland?
Second.
Seconded by Porczaskey, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Under the regular agenda, again, nothing new to show you tonight. We'd be looking for a motion to approve that. Motion by Olson, seconded by Jillian Peterson, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Non-agenda items and announcements, first of all, we wanted to recognize Kay Lutze, who retired from the City Planning Commission after 25 years of service. She's out in Oregon, so we'll do this, maybe she can watch it on YouTube or something. But we'll make sure that she gets her certificate and gift certificate and so forth. We also have a certificate of appreciation for Dominic Frantrop for his 15 years of service in the city, he works in the library. Peg says that he cannot attend tonight, but we'll make sure that she gets that to him. Thanks Peg. In your packet you have a thank you note from the American Legion, that's just informational. Under announcements and correspondence, or next we have public input. This is where we take discussion on items that are not on our agenda tonight. If we have anybody in the audience, and we do, that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, please step up to your podium, to the podium, and give your name and address for the record.
Glenn Schrader, 917 Evans Street. My situation I'm dealing with is speeding on Evans Street. That's a street that crosses over from Berlin Street to Churchill Street. And I've clocked cars that go in 50 miles an hour, beer truck at 45, and I stopwatch it, I got the distance picked out, and about half the cars, three quarters of them do go with a speed limit, and you can see that very readily, who's speeding and who's not. Garage sales are the only thing that stops the traffic and slows them down. But there's a lot of traffic, heavy trucks going through there all the time. Gino Roberts or Rogers, it's Roberts or Rogers, crossed the street from me, and he got sideswiped bodily, didn't get, have to go to the hospital, but they come through there and they don't pull over for you. And a few times I've been cutting awful close to by vehicles, and they weren't meeting anybody neither, they just shoot through there. And basically, we've got a lot of no parking signs, but we do need a couple of traffic signs up there, that would help, I believe. And it would be in the proximity of the addresses of, let me see if I got it here, I don't want to take a lot of your time.
That's okay.
Let's see here. Okay, if you're going west, it would be nice to have a speed sign about in the proximity of 721 Evans Street. And if you're going east, then it would help probably about 820 or 912, 820 is probably the proximity, and that's just before you hit the little bridge where the water goes down underneath there. But 721, 820 would probably help, 721 going west, 820 going east. They don't seem to realize that there is a speed limit in that area there. It's almost a 50/50, speeding trucks and speeding cars. Anywhere from teenagers to little old gray haired ladies. And, well, let's see here. They've tried flashing speed signs, that doesn't do anything. And the last one they had up, they last about two days, the battery goes dead. And the last one they had up was down by the stop sign when you're going down Evans Street to the west, and you come into Berlin Street, there's a flashing speed sign by the stop sign. They're slowing down, they're gonna stop, so I don't know what that speed sign is doing, what good it's doing. A speed bump, I think if the budget was put in for two, for a speed bump in that area, a lot of cities use them, they're not like a curb bump, they're very gradual, they come up gradual and they go back down gradual, so you can leave them all year round, a plow can go over it, or if not, it could be one that could be pulled in winter, it's not a big deal. But there has to be something done there because there's ladies that take their strollers with their babies, there's people that walk that street, and sooner or later someone's gonna get hurt seriously. And they just don't realize, and it's, I've got a list of cars, I've got colors and license plates, which don't do any good, but I've been pretty diligent in what's going on there. And so, that's basically it.
Glenn, you're doing, by being here tonight, number one, we are on, we have the TV cameras on, so you're getting the information out tonight, and you are making the council aware of that. We know that Evans Street is a difficult road anyways, it's a thin road, it's not curved, and it doesn't have sidewalks, and it doesn't look like you could even put sidewalks on there if you wanted to, and that still doesn't solve the problem of speeding either. I'm not sure, when he talks about truck traffic, like he talked about delivery trucks and stuff like that, is truck traffic allowed on that road?
Everything is sir, everything.
I'm actually asking whoever can help me there, Mario?
I don't see a lot of truck traffic as far as delivery trucks that use that route. I could see the, with Bethany going up there, that there's a lot of trucks using that entrance, take Evans Street over. Also, there's some milk trucks and stuff like that, is the traffic icy, I don't know if that's the type of vehicles. I've seldom seen a, like a 53 foot semi truck on that road. With like that construction, I know maybe Falk's or other companies are using that. As far as the speed sign, we can look into that as moving it away from the stop sign, that wouldn't make sense to me, they're really close to the stop sign, we try and move that around. We do have three or four batteries, so that shouldn't be an issue with a sign not working. We can also offer, certainly after this brought to our attention, we'll have some extra patrols out there and set up some squad cars out there. Is there a specific time, sir?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
6:30, 7:30, then there sends me a shot of traffic, 7:30, 8:30, 12 to 1, 2 to 3, and 5 to 6. And there's probably some shift changes in there, and of course, when the school starts up, of course, it gets heavier, the traffic gets heavier. They do, they do travel through, like the beer trucks and things like that, and garbage trucks go through. Falk's trucks are usually pretty good about things, I've only seen maybe one or two that appeared to be a little over the speed limit. But delivery trucks, they come off of, of course, everybody knows, E comes into there, Berlin Street comes into there, and that's, you can't avoid that, but if somebody had a stop in there, there's no way they're gonna stop with a bigger truck, you know, if somebody gets in their way or something. And it's just inevitable, and I don't wanna see it, and I don't think anybody else wants to see it.
No, you're at 917 Evans Street?
917.
Okay. Do you have any objection to a patrol vehicle using your driveway?
No, I've even offered it back when I first moved there, and there was a young guy that was an officer, I think he was in the force, and I said, "You can park right there on my lawn, back up in there where the no parking sign is," I said, "Back in there," I says, and I was told at one time, "That's entrapment," and that's not entrapment. You can put that squad car in place you wanna, so...
The signs and the squad cars, is their biggest deterrent to slow down the speed?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Glenn, how long have you lived on Evans Street?
I think it's five years now, I used to live in Woodland Circle.
Okay.
And $5,000 tax, I didn't wanna pay that when I retired. I didn't know what the taxes were, I went to bought the house.
Okay.
But I've been in the city here about 10 years.
It's amazing what you ask and what you get in return. Okay, so we'll, thank you for your information. Mario, our Sergeant Gosefa is on that. Let's see if we can't just step up the enforcement there, maybe get that, that speed limit sign out there that tells you, is that the one you're talking about, how fast you're going?
Yeah, yeah, that's the one.
Let's see how much that helps Glenn, before we do anything more drastic than that, but I agree with you, I do believe that, that street is used more as a through street, and it's not a, it's not a road that's ready for heavy traffic, like I said, without the curb, with a lot of houses on there, with people walking on there. You know, I always try to find places where there's sidewalks to walk and jog and so on, but, you know, and I, I would suggest that, but I also am not suggesting that people should be allowed to speed either, so...
And I just wanna mention that, I do appreciate the police force and the fire department, I'm not criticizing them, by any means, I'm not criticizing anybody. It's just that I live there, and I have a little more time, a lot of people do, because I'm retired, semi-retired. So, and I do a lot of work in my yard, as it shows, and so I get to see it all. And so, we try and protect the turtles, and we try and protect the animals, let's protect the people.
Absolutely, you let us know how it's going Glenn, but we'll see what we can do for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, let's move on to unfinished business. This is license report number 1327, this is dealing with an operator's license for a Blake Stecker, and this has been held over. Blake is here tonight, Blake, if you don't mind, just step up to the podium, please. Just give your name again, just...
Blake Stecker.
And this is actually a renewal license, and Chief Coke is not here tonight, but he had indicated to us, and maybe Blake, you can just explain what's going on.
Okay, yep, my name's Blake Stecker. I've been a bartender here in town for about four years now, at Clearwater Harbor and Simpson's here in town. And I go to UW Fox Valley for school, I'll be heading there back in the fall, and I paid my way through school by bartending, that's what I do, it's my passion, I truly love to do it, love the hospitality, I love serving people in this community. And I actually rent a home from Amy Simpson on Harriet Street, and a couple months ago, I had a roommate who was unemployed for four months, had not paid rent for the entirety of that four months. I had asked him to leave three separate times, and on the third time, he was not happy with me about kicking him out of the house, and he decided to call the police and falsely accuse me of injuring him, which has not been proven at all, so that's why I'm here today.
So do you, do you have a court date set, Blake?
Yes, it is ongoing, yes.
So there, is there actually a date that's set up for that?
My next date, I believe, is July 27th.
Okay, and again, I just wanna remind everybody that this is a renewal, this is not a new license, also. Anything else, I'm sorry Blake, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's about it.
I have a question Blake, what are the charges?
Right now, the charges are assault and battery and disorderly conduct.
In our, in our letter from Henry, it says it's pending felony conviction.
Yes.
Felony charges?
An agreement has been worked out between the district attorney and my attorney, that the felony charges will not be followed through.
Any other questions or comments? Council members? When, when is your current license expire?
Expired the 30th.
Reason you didn't make the June 21st meeting?
I was not aware until after the fact, that my license was pending.
Henry, was a letter sent out to him?
We did. Now, the way the mail moves, I don't know how often you check your mailbox.
Yeah, I was, I was informed.
The letter went out, I believe it was a Wednesday before the council meeting.
June 16th. Yeah, I did not receive that letter, check my mail every day.
How many years have you been working at Simpson's, Blake?
At the end of the summer will be three years.
Okay. Have you had any incidents, serving underage drinkers, any bar fights, anything like that?
Never.
At Simpson's, where you had to call in police?
Never.
I have to tell you people, and this is just my opinion, of course, it's pending, for one thing, you know, and this is a renewal of a license, he has a good track record. This is his livelihood, in my opinion. He's done a good job at his place of business. I mean, again, I think that what's happened at home is more of a domestic type situation, it was a roommate, I mean, and we're only hearing one side of the story, but quite honestly, you know, I could see where this could happen, with young adults, and I, since nobody was speaking, I am speaking, that's why I'm saying this, but I truly, truly believe that he has, he should have the right to continue, especially since he hasn't even been, had his day in court yet.
Yeah, innocent until proven guilty, but I, it begs the question, what do we do with a bartender who is licensed but has a felony conviction in the process? Do we suspend the license, do we have any process for that?
Well, when we, we do the renewal, we'll do the background checks.
Okay.
That's when it would get, get picked up, and then you've seen that matrix, so it's guidance. This particular thing was not related to his job, was a, an ancillary thing, so that's all the judgment that the council has to put into it. I know the ones that you have denied in the past, the, the history was a lot more, a lot more infractions, you know, alcohol related infractions, that kind of stuff.
John, if somebody, John Hart, if somebody, hopefully you can answer this, but if somebody, to go along with Alan's question, if somebody does have a license and then does commit a felony, do you have the right to revoke his operator's license before renewal?
You can't just revoke it, you'd have to have a hearing, just like anything else, and it'd be difficult unless it was drug related or alcohol related at the establishment. Then it would be something that the PD would probably pick up and ask for a review of that license, and then you'd have to have some kind of a hearing. I don't think you can, just because it goes on record somewhere, you can have a council meeting and revoke it without having hearing for the individual. I don't know that we've ever run into that, it always comes up on renewal, or if it's a new, a new case.
Okay.
I would move for approval of license report 1327.
Second.
We have a motion by Hagan, seconded by Keeland, I heard him the loudest here, that we approve license report number 1327 for Blake Stecker. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, good luck to you.
Thank you, council.
License report number 1328, this is a operator's license for Tony Tamaro, tomorrow? Tamaro? And again, this was one that we've asked the Tony to be in attendance, we do not see him here tonight, and he did get another request, Henry, Sandy? Okay, so, this is at least his third? Third request. So again, you have the ability to hold this over and ask him to come to the next meeting, or you can just deny his license report, but remember that if you do deny it, he cannot reapply, I don't know, it's a guide, yeah, with a Y. So he would not be able to reapply then for six months. Good, so that's your options.
We know where this gentleman works?
I'd move that we deny license report number 1328.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by mail, seconded by Chestnut, that we deny license report number 1328, it's an operator license for Tony Tamaro. Come here. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Do you send a letter, is that what you do there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to new business, this has to do with downtown, get a little happier here, deal with downtown on Main, 2016 event series, and this will include road closures. Brennan?
Thank you Mayor, members of council, my memo starts on page 34. This evening, staff is moving forward with a request to shut down Main Street for one block from Fulton Street to Union Street for two times this summer, for two different events that we are seeking to do for the downtown business owners in conjunction with the Wopaka Chamber of Commerce and the downtown retailers group. The first event, which is gonna occur here in a couple weeks, on July 20th, is a new event this year, Summer Games. We are tag teaming with Wopaka Community Arts Board, they are having a summer nights concert series at the gazebo, and we are going to be providing kind of a free picnic for everybody for the community, and utilizing Main Street to have differential of different kid and adult themed games that evening on Main Street. Some of them are bags, ping pong, some other events will be occurring that evening. We are seeking the road closure from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, due to the fact that at 4 o'clock, I do want, we'll be working with the police department and public works to have some cones out there to identify and let people know that we'll be closing the street at 4:00 PM, and the cars would need to be removed by then for that event, and then the road reopen back at 9:00 PM. The second event is the second annual Mini Sputter Open, again, we are looking to close the road, actually at 6:00 AM that morning, due to the installation of the mini golf course, and the road would be back open around 11:00 PM at night. The hours have been expanded for that, as we were actually adding a glow time from about 8 to 10:00 PM that night, for older adults and kids to participate in. We will be working with both of them to, I have spoken to some of the business owners, we just still do need to do a little bit more of public outreach and correspondence to them. I know that, at least for the Mini Sputter Open, trying to get people to at least fat corrections for their morning breakfast crowd, we'll work with them to see what we can do and get additional signage out there, so that we can get people safely to their establishments in the morning. The map that's in front of you is the map for both road closures that we are seeking.
Good, any questions, comments?
I'm making motion, we approve the request for these two road closures for those two dates.
Motion by Hackett, seconded by Olson, that we approve the road closures for downtown on Main 2016 events, which, one is on July 20th, 2016, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM, and then on August 25th, 2016, from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Discussion.
How, for the Mini Sputter, how did beer sales go last year, were there any violations, were there any problems?
I'd have to actually ask Aaron, because Friends of the Park were the ones that actually handled the beer sales for that event.
Yeah, no, there weren't any violations that I'm aware of, while I was there most of the time. I thought everything went okay, we do some stuff different for setup. We were kinda running around, and there's some things that will change and make things run smoother. Friends of Wopaka Parks will do it again, is the plan. Haven't talked to Brennan a lot about that this year yet, but that has just been kind of in the back of our head, but no, there was no issues. We didn't really see anyone that was over served. We had people volunteering that had worked in our concessions and sold beer at Swan Park on Tuesday night, so they're familiar with it. So yeah, to answer your questions, no violations that I'm aware of.
Both events will again have signage out on AFrams and everything else, identifying that people cannot take beer past the location. We do have volunteers that will be scheduled for both events as well, and I will be working with Brian, Hosele for patrol, whether it's gonna be on foot or if we're gonna be using off-duty officers as well.
Brennan, who sets up the event, who sets up for the golf, who puts all that together?
We have utilized our public works department to install it, and then we have volunteers that take it off the road.
Thank you.
Along with that, you really have to dig 18 holes in the blacktop for his nine?
We're only, we are only doing nine holes, the installation that's being utilized right now will only be, be able to be utilized for a couple more years before Main Street gets reconstructed, which at that time, we'll have to look at an alternative way to construct it.
When they heal those, when they fill those holes, Steve, it might help it.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead Jill.
Topic, but it's about the Mini Sputter, and we've gotten a lot of feedback last year that we did it on the night at the WLC open house. Don't know if maybe you looked at their calendar, found out if that was gonna be, I believe they always do it the Thursday before, and that's from 3 till 7, so it was like during the exact time that it's open, I don't know if you wanna...
Yeah, we are gonna be, I have not looked at the calendar event for this year, whether or not it falls on the same night, but we are actually starting it an hour earlier than last year, and extending it until actually 10 o'clock this year, so we're actually providing before and after hours for participants to take advantage of that.
Okay, we, any other discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, signify by... All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Opaquah area triathlon, street closures. Henry?
Mayor, thank you. I guess this is our sixteenth event. It's the same request as in past years. We've got a kids' triathlon on Friday evening, and then of course, the main event Sunday morning. On Friday night, we're seeking to close the street at five forty-five PM, South Main from the park up to Badger for the kids' bike portion of the race. We typically get done about seven, seven PM, so it goes pretty quick.
Henry, can I just correct you? I think you said Sunday, but it actually is Saturday.
Saturday, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, Friday, and that's Friday night. And then Saturday morning, we'd be seeking closures beginning at six thirty AM to eleven AM. And the closures would be South Main Street, Lake to South Park, Lake Street, South Main to Berlin, and then Berlin Street would be Lake to Park Avenue. And then on Saturday morning as well, Washington Street from Badger to the Parkway would close at seven AM. If you have any questions, same request as previous years. Pardon? Well, we'll keep that pretty much open till like rates, I don't know, quarter to seven or so. We try to keep cars moving in there because that's a parking spot. You know, we're going to park at the lower shelter and then move, move out. Again, it gets probably a little crazy like right at, at race time because people are still moving around and, you know, people get off on the ramps and, you know, get a little confused and then they have to go back up on ten, you know, because we won't let them in. So, but we're back to the original route, so I, I think it's going to be better at that interchange because the last, last couple of years with the, with the detour we're using, there was a lot more action at that intersection, at that highway ten.
What are the dates for these again?
Uh, August nineteenth, Friday the nineteenth, and Saturday twentieth.
Okay, any other questions? Would you like to make a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we approve the request for the Opaquah area triathlon for, uh, street closures for the event, Opaquah area triathlon event on August nineteenth and twentieth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Next, we have an engagement letter between the city of Opaquah and RW Baird, the city financial advisor, our city's financial advisor. Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. My report is on page thirty-seven of the packet. Because of the Dodd-Frank Act of two thousand and ten requiring us to have an engagement letter with our financial advisor, they can't get aid through underwriting of our bonds. I have, they have an engagement letter in which we pay a fee like we did with Ellers on, you know, TIF analysis. I'm bringing this forward because we're going to have RW Baird do, be at the July twelfth meeting to give us advice on the refinancing of the CDA lease revenue bonds, which their expertise is needed to do that call. Otherwise, if it was just another state trust fund loan, I could, maybe any fee. But I need an engage, approval of the engagement letter, and it would be spread, the cost spread between all of the TIDs.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Chestnut, that we approve of this engagement letter between the city of Opaquah and RW Baird. Any discussion?
Since we are approving, or would, might be approving this eight thousand dollars, then we wouldn't have any fees on reissuing of any debt?
No, because we would be going to the state trust fund loan and not the open market. If we were going to go to the open market, then they would get another, they would get some additional fees for producing the official statement and some of the other bond documents. But right now, we're just going with just analysis and advice.
I'm just trying to get a handle on if this is more expensive than how it has been done in the past.
Well, and done in the past, you can't do anymore. Thank you, federal government. With the Dodd-Frank Act in two thousand and ten, they've had problems with financial advisors who not only gave you financial advice, but also made money on this other side as underwriters. So the federal government went and closed that loophole to those firms that can underwrite and do that, which RW Baird is one of them.
Haven't we done financing in the past six years in, in that way, in that manner that we have?
To a certain extent. You had trust fund loans in the past six years, but you haven't had any, gone to market in the last six years, I don't believe. If you had, they might have put in part of, part of their fees or they would have not, you know, done any fees. They've done that in the past. But right now, going forward, we have to have an engagement letter with RW Baird. It would be, we'd have fees upfront if we went with a different FA, also financial advisor, if we went with Ellers. One, they're not an underwriter, they're independent, but we would have to pay for their, they're, they're giving advice is what they're, we're pretty much asking them to do. And they're advising us.
And they're going to be doing a complete analysis on all this and giving us a recommendation?
They're going to be giving us some additional recommendations on top of the Ellers one. They're going to handle, if we decide to call the CDA, three CDA lease revenue bonds, then they would handle the call provisions of that. That's more than, because there are bonds out there. That's more than what I can do.
I just want to know that we're getting, getting value, proper value for eight thousand dollars worth of advice, that's all.
I, I guess I'm looking at it that for them to come here and, and give you advice, it's going to either cost, cost us with, with whoever the financial advisor is going to be.
How many hours are they going to be putting in for this eight thousand dollars?
I have them right now, working on, on the analysis presentation for next Tuesday's meeting. So they are working on refiguring the debt schedules and some of the other information that we have on the development agreement.
Are we potentially going to save more than this eight thousand dollars that we'd be paying them?
In interest costs, yes.
Thank you.
Took a while, but you finally got him to agree to.
He started asking the right questions, so.
No, no, I, I, you know, to be all serious about this, it, it does make sense that there's some transparency here, so that when we do go out to market and to borrow money, it was always included in the actual sale of the bonds and so, and now we actually know what our charges are. Now, are those charges more? We don't know because we never were charged those before. So I guess we're going to find out as we go forward here. If that makes sense. We had a motion ready. Okay, ready to vote? This is going to be a roll call. Sandy will call the roll.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
You're still up.
Okay, um, page forty is on the renewal of the liability auto physical damage workers' comp insurance policies with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance. Our policies are up for renewal. I did receive a quote from the Horton Group for workers' comp. It was comparable, but after talking to Henry, we decided to just keep everything with the league and work instead with the property insurance with Horton. As you can see with the proposal from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, our premium is going down because of our modifier on our workers' comp policy. I am using some of the savings though to increase the coverage on the auto physical damage from an actual replacement cost. So if I bought, I bought a squad car for twenty-six thousand dollars, I would get twenty-six thousand dollars. If, and it's three years from now and that squad car costs me thirty, I'm still going to get twenty-six thousand dollars. So instead, for this, the twenty-eight hundred dollars more, I'm going with replacement cost for our vehicles, especially some of our bigger vehicles. We'll be able to repurchase after our deductible a brand-new vehicle if it becomes totaled. Just for twenty-eight hundred dollars, it was a no-brainer.
Okay, any questions? Motion?
Make a motion, we approve what was just talked about for the compensation insurance, workers' comp and.
Motion by Hackett, second by Whitman, that we approve of renewing the city's liability auto physical damage and workers' comp insurance policies with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
And Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Paul, I actually, I'm thankful that you did ask a lot of questions because Kathy's on vacation this week and we didn't want her to just come in for a minute or two.
Yeah, anytime I can help like that, just let me know.
Yeah, thanks, yeah, all right. Let's move on then to aeration blower upgrade. We got a number of items here. Justin, that's our first one.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Okay, page forty-eight is my memo detailing the aeration blower upgrade project. Should look familiar, I pretty much just reused my last memo, showing the project timeline. The things that are in bold are basically what has happened since the last time I came here and got approval for Kemper's contract for design services. So we got the plans, permits, specifications all created, advertising, we got bids. The bid opening is shown two pages later on Kemper's letter, but the table will show you that we did get a number of good bids and we are coming within the budgeted amount of fifty thousand, of course, including the grant money from Focus on Energy. So I got two actions I'm looking for tonight. One is awarding the construction contract to Sabo Mechanical. There is an air though, I do, I'm not asking for fifty-three thousand dollars for this contract, I'm looking for forty-four thousand and twenty-five dollars. The reason for that is that Kemper put on this project, they specked out two different blowers. The first one, which was the standard bid, which is shown, the fifty-two thousand dollars, was a, basically a blower used fairly commonly throughout the state. A lot of plants use it, a lot of plants are comfortable with it. This other blower that they specked out is kind of a newer blower. The manufacturer, the parent company, is from overseas, so we had some questions about it. But from the time that I put this memo in to now, the staff and I visited some plants, talked to a number of operators, and basically our questions on maintenance reliability, service, parts, were all answered. Even though this, this optional blower, which saves about seven to eight thousand dollars, it's owned by a company overseas, but it's manufactured here, I believe in, in Denver. There's a sales rep in Green Bay. So the questions about long-term maintenance costs pretty much went away. Seymour Plant has three of these blowers and they just absolutely love them. They say they have almost no maintenance on them at all. So I guess, visiting several plants, talking to people, we decided that this optional blower, which saves us about seven, eight thousand dollars, is the way to go. So the first action I would need is to award Sabo Mechanical for an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand and twenty-five dollars.
Motion by Hackett, second by Dave Peterson, that we approve of the upgrade, of the aeration blower upgrade project to Sabo Mechanical Incorporated for an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand and twenty-five dollars. Discussion? Sandy will call.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
And Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
I'll keep going on the same one. I'll note though that with this, I guess, optional blower we're going to use, our return on investment is going to be about two and a half years now, so very good savings on the energy for this project. So the second action I'm looking for is to increase the design contract for Kemper and Associates for an additional fifteen hundred and fifty dollars. The, as you know, Kemper was retained, they did the initial report, and then they rewarded the design contract. Their initial contract specked out or detailed to use a MCC, a brand-new MCC section. What an MCC section is, a motor control cabinet. Basically, if you were going to plant, you'd see a big metal plate, you'd say, that's where all electrical is. So as we went through the design, we kind of did our homework like we should and found out that this brand-new cabinet that they wanted to install or put into the design cost about six thousand dollars. And we could save a lot of money of just doing a wall-mounted, basically a piece, a different box, different metal box, just dedicated to our variable frequency drive, which basically powers the motor, lets it ramp up and down. So the savings there were roughly six grand. But with that, Kemper had to alter their design, and with that, change the contract, and they're asking for another fifteen hundred dollars. Initially, when Kemper came forward, March first, and they wanted to do this design for us, their initial proposal was nineteen thousand dollars plus, and I worked with them, negotiated with them, and got that contract down to eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars, so that when this change came up, they were unwilling to bend again, per se. So with all of that, if there are no, any more questions, I'd be looking for approval to increase the design contract for Kemper and Associates for an additional fifteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Move to approve. Motion by Mayo, second by Olson, that we approve increasing the design contract for the aeration blower upgrade project to Kemper and Associates for an amount, for an additional amount of one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
And Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
You're still rolling.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Page fifty-five is my next memo detailing the water main loop at Beth- Page fifty-five is my next memo detailing the water main loop at Bethany Home. This project started summer of two thousand and fifteen, before I came around. I think all of you should be well aware of this, but I'll just kinda sum it up quickly. We had four-inch water main going down Shadow Lake Drive. We teamed up with Bethany Home since they were renovating and they had to move a line on their property because they're a new expansion, and we decided to replace that four-inch and connect, make, and make a loop. So the big benefit is, obviously, replace four-inch line, which DNR does not like and firefighters do not like. We created a loop system, which you all know is a very good, reduce redundancy, added a hydrant, and, well, with the agreement, we incurred some cost to construct that, replace that line, and basically Falk's Brothers, which was retained by VJS, which is the prime contractor for Bethany, installed this line. Following my memo is a, a map that shows basically what was replaced, what the cost that we are incurring was the, the main that was replaced on our side of the right-of-way. Everything else on the other side was on Bethany Home. And basically, the, the invoice or the cost, I did review it, Falk's put together a good cost. It took quite a long time to come to here, actually, the work's been done for quite a long time, and I did not agree with the price coming from Bethany, and we kinda had some back and forth. Basically, we settled down to what is shown on the requested action. So if there's any questions, I'll take them, otherwise, I'm looking for an action to authorize the payment to Bethany Home for this water main loop not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents.
Make that into a motion.
Thanks, Chuck. Motion by Whitman? Second by Hackett that we approve of the payment for the Bethany Home water main loop for an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. Discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson? Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, still going, Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. Page fifty-seven is actually a resolution, and this is declaring our intent to reimburse the DNR for the Safe Drinking Water Fund. The application was turned in, this is just another part of it that we need to pass this resolution. Basically, pulled this one off, I believe it was from two thousand and eleven, there was a similar one, so I know it's been done in the past. But in a nutshell, we're going out to get this safe drinking water loan, and this just resolution is required by the DNR, so it shows that our commitment to the, to the fund and paying it off. So I'm looking for approval on that, Mayor Smith.
Okay. You have a resolution in front of you. Justin, explain that to you, we would be looking for a motion.
May I interject here? There's some awkward wording in the first sentence, and I just thought that should be cleaned up before it gets, gets officially approved.
You mean like where it says, whereas the City of Opec?
No, where, yeah, it says, plans to undertake the parentheses, the project, parentheses, close parentheses. It seems to me it should be defining something there.
You know what he's asking for there?
Yeah, we can include some wording. I, well, it says the municipality, so that when you read down further, section one, it says, the municipality shall, that's just referencing that the municipality's already been defined. And anywhere where it says the project, it means that, well, this project that has been referenced. So we can include some wording to, I guess, clean up the reference.
We'll just reference the project, yeah, all right.
So you're okay with?
I'm okay, otherwise, yeah.
Okay. Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, yes.
Thank you. Motion by Keeland, second by Hagan, that we approve resolution number thirteen seventy-one. This is a resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures for safe drinking water. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
And Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Justin. Next, we have license report number thirteen twenty-nine. This is an operator's license, number of operator's license. These are, of course, all pending payments and fines owed to, to the city. Clerk's office is recommending that you approve these, so. Motion by Dave Peterson, second by Jillian Peterson, that we approve of license report number thirteen twenty-nine. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. I guess we're, next we're to the part where we're going into closed session, so I would need a motion to convene into closed session.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Chestnut, that we convene into closed session with accord, in accordance with Wisconsin State Statutes nineteen point eight-five, parant one, parant G, as it relates to conferring with legal counsel for the governor, governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, in which it is or is likely to become involved. Good. We need a roll call vote. Again, staff, you're not required to be here, except for probably Kathy and Brennan and Henry, so we'll take roll.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett? Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
And Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.